For the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. First item on our agenda tonight is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as sent to the news media 24 hours in advance.
I'll second.
Also by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Lamos, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There's motion carries. I want to make a notice also that Councilman Blanford is absent this evening. So next item on here is this leadership statement. That's the city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Next item is the council workshop we had on Monday. I'm not going to read that to you for obvious reasons, but it is available online if anybody would like to look at that. Next item up, we have a public comment. Again, we have a little blurb that we would like to insert with this as well. In conformance with Iowa open meeting laws, no action or discussion can occur on items presented during public comment. The public should not make any assumptions or assertions, but is based on the lack of response to public comment from council or staff. Next item, public hearings, we have none. Oh, I'm sorry. Public comments. I'm getting ahead. Sorry about that.
Monday, I talked about how people should write their congressman and et cetera.
State your name for us.
Oh, my name's Mickey Ferris, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
And then the other day Governor Norm made a statement. And she said that any illegals could register and self-deport, and then they would be allowed to come back, and it would give them a path to citizenship. And the only reason, mostly you probably saw that, but the only reason I wanted to talk was because I have an in-law who, she was from Malaysia, and she graduated from the University of Iowa. And then she had a work permit, and so she started working. And her employer had to send a paper, and every so often, I suppose to show that she was still working or something, and he failed to do so. And ICE came and picked her up and took her to Omaha and locked her up. And anyway, she had her choice of being deported by them and never being able to come back or to self-deport. So she self-deported, and then they give you, there's so long you have to stay away. And then you come back, and then you can become a citizen, work at it if you want to, and she did. So I just wanted people to know that that does work. So that's all I wanted to say.
That's good, good, thank you. Anybody else before I move forward? All right, not hearing anything, we'll move ahead. Moving on to new business. We did no public hearings, no old business, so we'll go to new business. The first item is consider the certified local government report for the Hampton Historic Preservation? That's a rough one. Commission. And Mr. Davies?
Yes, I serve as the chairman of the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission. And it also serves as a certified local government. And we are required to present an annual report to the city council. After the report is given to city council, it's submitted to the state Historic Preservation Office, which is a part of the Iowa Economic Development Authority. And as FYI, Allison Archobo is the CLG coordinator. So certified local government, I'll use the initial CLG. And a CLG in Iowa is a city, county, or land use district that has signed an agreement with the National Park Service and the state of Iowa to preserve historic properties, in this case, is the city of Hampton. And then the CLG program is a part of the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. Now, how does a community become a CLG? Well, it must pass legislation to protect historic properties and pass legislation to establish a Historic Preservation Commission. And Chapter 24 of the Hampton Code of Ordinances deals with the Hampton Preservation Commission, if you would like to look that up online. And what does a CLG do? Well, they work to preserve historic buildings, neighborhoods, and downtowns, support the revitalization of historic areas, participates in National Register of Historic Places nomination process. They develop educational programs, and they also do surveys and inventories of historic resources. And like I said, every year, our CLG must report what we do. And so these are the different activities that the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission, the CLG, did. And this report is broken down into some areas, like assistance with preservation issues or projects, educational programs, partnerships, meeting dates, the members, as well as what the work plan is for the next coming year. And I did write about this in my weekly column this week in Hampton Chronicle, if you want to read it. Or I think, I don't know if it is put online or not, to be honest with you, as far as on the website. But that might be something we could take a look at doing. But just briefly to go through it, there was a copy included in your packet for this evening. And as far as with assistance with issues and projects, sort of combining with partnerships, our group is working together with other entities to accomplish the many historic-related type of projects that we work with. I'm a member of the Franklin County Historical Society, and Tuesday afternoons, I go out there and volunteer. One of the big things with the Franklin County Historical Society this year was the REA plant was named as a national landmark, and that's a very, very big deal. And I think it'll be a real good thing for Franklin County as that gets up and running. We have members that work with Hampton Cemetery, Friends of the Hampton Cemetery Group, that put on the cemetery walk every year. We have been meeting jointly with the Design Committee of the Greater Franklin County Chamber of Commerce to assist in approving building improvement grants, and that's money that the council gives to the Chamber, Main Street Program to do that. And we also will be collaborating with them on some projects that I'll talk about briefly in a minute. Just moving on, educational programs, much the same as happened this year's and past years. May is Preservation Month, we do a scavenger hunt where people can, we give pictures of parts of historic buildings, and people have to try to find and identify that building. And we also, I put a bulletin board display of the Franklin County and Hampton properties on the National Register, and I put that up in Windsor Theater. And then, like I mentioned before, we've been helping with Cemetery Walk. And they'll be, the sixth annual one will be held on Memorial Day Sunday this year. And we're just going to do one walk, and that'll be at 1:00. Partnerships, I think I've mentioned, but I'll just mention again, Chamber Main Street we work with. We've worked with the Historical Society, Franklin County Historical Society, the Friends of the Hampton Cemetery, which includes the Franklin County Arts Council. And I am a member of the Preservation Iowa Board of Directors. Our official meeting dates, which were required, were per the open meetings law, so we published that and so forth. We met January 20th, March 13th and 20th, July 17th, and December 26th. And then I did attend the Preserve Iowa Summit in Mount Pleasant on June 5th and 6th of this year. And the members of our committee, myself, I'm the chairman, Ella Butler, Brian Stevens, Michelle Schaefer, who's secretary, and then Mardell Sidmore Van Kleen. And then just the work plan, what we're planning on doing this year, many of the same things we're going to be doing again, just because we've had good success with them. We will be continuing meeting with the Chamber Main Street Program, working on projects that include refurbishing the BanShell Park benches. And then we're looking at informational signing that would include QR codes on buildings and historic properties. We'll do Preservation Month in May activities again, like I mentioned, working with the Friends of the Cemetery. We will be attending, or I'll be attending the 2025 Preservation Iowa Summit. That'll be June 5th through 7th in Muscatine this year. We'll review as we need this Main Street walking tour that we have. I'd like to see the GAR Memorial Hall, or our group would like to see the GAR Memorial Hall maybe open for tours, maybe more often than it is. It is open now, but you need to schedule an appointment with it. We'll be also looking at working and updating the building inventory that the Chamber Main Street has. I think the last time it's really been updated possibly was like 2022. And that would include like ownership, property values, and things like that. One big thing coming up for the Hampton Public Library is the reenacting the library's dedication held 120 years ago. And that'll be in October. And then finally, just looking at compiling a history of the Hampton Main Street Program, and then maybe trying to get some, putting together some articles to be published in the Hampton Chronicle, just to be promoting some of the historic sites and some of the history behind the sites. So that's all I have for the report. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, thank you.
Questions for Mr. Davies?
If not, thank you very much.
Not hearing any questions at this point. We'll entertain a motion to approve the certified local government report for the Hampton Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Hodge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the continuing, considering the Terracotta Proposal for asbestos abatement consulting services for 4 First Street Northwest. I believe we have Caleb on ISG, Caleb?
Yep, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, we got you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Caleb Hayes. I work for ISG, I'm a project manager. I've been assisting Ron Dunst in reviewing the proposal from Terracotta. They did an inspection on Buildings 4 and Building 6 on First Street Northwest. And we refined the original proposal, there was some items that were taken off. Otherwise, the design work, just talking through some of the line items on the proposal, the design work, which would include a cost estimate and bid assistance, has a dollar amount of $3,000 that will get to, get to the construction portion. There are some items that aren't required by the state of Iowa, and we asked them to include them in their proposal for consideration beyond that, just for something to think about. And that would be the final visual clearances, and then a final sampling of the facility, if there's anything that they find that may be concerning, once the abatement contractors are out. The only recommendation for that is you get an engineer to sign off on a final clean bill of health. You will have those reports from the abatement contractors, but that final bill of health always helps as well.
All right. Ron, did you have a question?
No, I guess, does anybody have any questions? So basically, these are the same proposals, one for 4, one for 6. We're treating them separately on the agenda, and they would be voted on separately. But as Caleb said, these services we feel are important, especially we can, in the end, have a nice report from an engineer stating that all the asbestos is removed, so that when we put this property in the hands of a private owner or developer, that they can be assured that there's no asbestos in the property.
All right, any questions for Caleb at this point?
Can you help me understand, did we have grant money for the asbestos inspection?
Yeah, so we were eligible for asbestos inspection grant, and that work's been completed. We just received the final invoice this week, so we'll be submitting for reimbursement from the state through, it's a DNR grant. And then we were eligible for abatement grant, but it's a maximum, I think, up to $25,000 on each property. It appears that abatement of asbestos will be well above that, but $50,000 is $50,000.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the asbestos abatement for Number 4 and Number 6.
Yeah, so let's do one at a time here. So we got, Barry's got, Mr. Lamos has a motions to approve the proposal for 4 First Streets Northwest.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Davies. Anybody, anybody further discussion? Otherwise, we'll put it to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries. So then we'll move to the annexed item, which is the same thing, the proposal for asbestos abatement for 6 First Street Northwest. And we have a motion by Mr. Lamos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. I'm assuming no more discussion on that as well, so we, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we're good. And thank you, Caleb, for your input there.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
All right. Next item up is set March 21st, 27th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Has a time and date of public hearing on the fiscal 26 property tax levy. Mr. Dunst?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We are setting a date, March 27th, 2025, 6:00 PM, as the date and time of public hearing on fiscal year 26 property tax levy. This will be published in the Chronicle, and we'll hold a public hearing at that time. After that meeting on the 27th, we will then, at a separate meeting, the law requires us to close one meeting and go into another meeting, we will then set a date for public hearing on the actual budget approval. So this is the first step that we have to comply with. And once this is, we've got the date set, we'll get it in the paper for publication. Any questions?
Do your other associates in other parts of the state, maybe you don't talk to them, but maybe you do, and our city managers, are they struggling with their budgets this year? Are they okay? Or, I don't know, maybe you don't talk to them.
Well, I read in the paper, Fort Dodge is having to make major cuts to programs, because they have basically a shortfall due to the new legislation that had a greater impact on their taxable valuation than what we're seeing here. They have greater growth, and so they get greater cuts. Des Moines as well is having huge shortfalls, and they're looking at cuts as well. So yeah, I mean, there are cities that have cuts, there are some cities that it doesn't have a real impact on this year. You know, we just don't know in future years what it's going to do.
Okay. Any other questions? Now, we'd entertain a motion to set March 27th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Has the time and date of the public hearing on fiscal year 26 property tax levy.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Greifey.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I entertain a motion to approve claims as submitted by staff in the amount of $154,564.67.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Mr. Hodge. Any further discussion on the claims? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We don't have any ordinances or resolutions this evening, so we'll go on to the consent agenda. And that would include approving the previous minutes as drafted from the Thursday, February 13th, 2025's regular session. Schedule the next regular session for Thursday, March 13th, 2025 at 6:00 PM at the Hampton City Council Chambers. And to approve alcohol licensing renewal for Willie Sportsbar, 10 Firth Street Northwest, Hampton, Iowa. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Greifey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Brings us down to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
Your Second Annual Police Citizens Academy started yesterday. We had eight, seven or eight in attendance. And again, this allows community members a chance to learn the inner workings of the police department and get to meet our officers and other partners that we have. Last night, we went over police technology, nuisance, and craze training, active shooter training. So they got to kind of work through all that with us last night. We also conducted emergency drills with all the schools over the last couple of days. That gives the staff there a real feel of what an emergency would look like and how to respond to that. And then tomorrow, we meet with Attorney General Byrd, reference some school locks that we got a grant for, the sheriff's office, emergency management, and ourselves. And we're going to go over other school safety initiatives, basically, tomorrow, between 10:00 and 11:00 at the school. That's all.
She's coming here?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep. That's all I have to report on for tonight, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mr. Morrison? Mr. Lamos?
You're short one man on the PD, how's that working with overtime?
We've been trying to move our schedules around to try to limit the amount of overtime, but if there is a vacation, there is a day or two here and there that we do have some overtime. But it's been, it hasn't been a ton of overtime.
Have you had any luck finding a new recruit?
Not overly. We had a test date set up, that test date fell on the same date of Mason City's. I was unaware of that. So four of the four applicants also applied to Mason City PD. I told them to get back ahold of me after that, and I've only heard from one. So we reopened the application process, and I think we had four applications come in since then. We have a new test date of March 22nd, and so we're going to go with that. Mason City is hiring again on the 26th. We tried to go a week before theirs this time, so we're hoping to get something out of there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Chief Morrison? All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Yesterday, staff was able to get another water main break repaired in the 400 block of Second Avenue Southeast. And that was a tough one to find. We actually had to call in the leak detection company to come help us with that one. And they did a great job, but it took a couple of days before they could even find this one. It was tough. We scoured the entire community. We knew from our SCADA system at the water plant that we were losing a considerable amount of water. And staff and struggled, so we called in this company, and we were able to find it. Guys got it repaired, and happy to report today, we're back to normal, so we're not showing any losses today. That's good. Water treatment plant project keeps chugging along. We did add a new street sweeper to the fleet that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. And a very nice machine, very clean. It's a one-owner, coming from a one-owner community. It was stored inside, very well taken care of. I believe it's only had two operators in its entire life. And so we worked with a couple of staff members, we went up, and then called back to Ron and let Ron work his magic with them. And anyway, we're going to be happy to have that. So having two in case of a breakdown will be great. And then having two, maybe will speed some things up for us, help us get to more important work. Vintage light project, we're literally like 99.9% done. There's one globe, and it's given staff a heck of a time in the northwest, I think northwest corner of BanShell. We're going to have to do something different with the set screws. We can't even get the old ones out. Guys are really struggling with that a little bit, so we might have to do some extra work on that one. But there's only one left. So if you drive through the community right now, or downtown, and look at those vintage lights, man, I think they're sharp. I think that was a great project, we're very appreciative for the grant. Cemetery tree removal project, south flats are looking pretty rough, but there's a lot of missing dead ass trees, so that's great. I think there's still a couple tipped, and there's a couple cut up yet. Going to have some restoration to do once they're all said and done, but anyway, they're getting close. And that's going to, it always looks worse before it gets better, but it'll look better, I promise. Had three funerals, I think they reported this week. City right-of-way trees are being worked on, the guys are bouncing between that. And then working out at the work that we had going on out at the old wastewater plant and the trickling filter. Iowa Walsall come in to cut some concrete for us and different things. So the guys have been bouncing around, because we have to move those big concrete chunks out of their way. Then they cut a day, and then we remove some more. But Iowa Walsall's completed, so we only have just a little bit left. We're hoping to take some of the scrap metal from that project. We had some scrap stainless steel, and quite a bit of it. So we're going to take that up and see if we can recover some funds that way to help pay for that. Hoping for some good dry weather early this year, because we do still have that skate park project moving forward. Trees were moved in the fall, so we should be in a good position for that. And I do have a representative coming to a march meeting from Bargain Incorporated. They specialize in crack sealing and different things of that nature. And they work on tennis courts, they want to come in, and then they'll provide us a little information on a project at the tennis courts. And then the burn site project, we're tiptoeing around the weather a little bit. It's been a little muddy here and there, but hopefully that dries up too, but that's shaping up nicely. I think there's been quite a bit of dirt moved, and we have a ton of rock stockpiled to start making that pad. So hopefully, we can get things rolling. And other than that, any questions or concerns?
Mr. Palmer?
I do see the cemetery tree project along Third Avenue, you might say, is rolling right along. It's sad, but you've got to take them down, there's no other way.
Right, right. And you know, eventually someday, we can, once we get all the tree work done, get the heavy trucks and different things out there, we can work on that South Cemetery Road. That's in, you know, some need of some maintenance.
Did we get, I think we're doing, what, 50 trees in the cemetery? Is that what we?
This year, we split it up. It's almost a little bit more than half. We did 28. We did 28 down in the South Cemetery flats this year, and then I'm hoping in the fall, we'll get up, be able to get up and get inside of that in the cemetery itself to get at those. Yep.
So that's on schedule, basically?
Yep, yes, sir.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Tar? Not hearing any. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunst?
I think I mentioned this at the workshop, but continuing to work on the DNR 2080 agreement as well as an agreement with the homeowners association out on the north shore of, of the lake who will, who discharge into the DNR sewer system. So since they discharge into it, we have to have an agreement with them as well. The majority of the city funds have been moved to First Security Bank, where they will be earning substantially more interest. This has been kind of a long process, but well worth it. We'll be earning more interest on our funds. Tom Birdson from Castle Dick &amp; Kelch delivered a return of premium check to us in the amount of $37,166. It's a dividend to members in the group based on overall results experienced by the IAMU Safety Group Insurance Program. So that was a nice return of premium. Continue to monitor property tax legislation. I got FCDA meeting in the morning. And then Bill had asked about the mausoleum situation where we could not move the remains in the old mausoleum. We have to, we had to publish a notice for three, and then wait three years, and then we go through the court process. But the end of that period, that three-year period, is, I believe, the end of December 2025. So I imagine in the spring, we're going to have to come up with a plan and continue that forward. Any questions or comments?
Do you know if FCDA is, is pushing the CB Foundry for anyone to buy? Or another question is, when are they going to get the ball rolling on the NIAC facility?
Well, that's, I'll probably get an update tomorrow on that. So I don't really have an answer for you, you know, as soon as you can. I think that, as soon as they can, but the last update I heard was they hope to have it open in the fall of '26. So hopefully, that's still on track. The Foundry, I think she, you know, she mentions it with any inquiries, but I think CBs is just kind of trying to move it on their own, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dunst? Hearing none. Thanks, sir. Over to our council reports. Let's start over with Mr. Hodge.
Well, I, I liked the weather. Kind of concerned when the used, the old saying was basketball season, tournaments, you get some bad weather. I hope we don't. That's about all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Greifey?
Continuing to work with the Chamber Promotion Committee, moving forward with our plans for the annual celebration dinner. We have made our nominations and have successfully voted on our awards that will be given this year, and I'm excited to share them. The membership award will go to the Hampton Public Library, who will be celebrating their 120th anniversary this year. Our organization award will go to La Luz. Unbelievable, I've done a lot of homework on La Luz. It's unbelievable what that organization does for our Latino community, not just in Hampton, but in Franklin County and northern Iowa as well. And then our leadership award, I'm very excited about, is going to Mark Morrison. Yay! And that's all I got.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Well, that's tough to follow that. You know, the best I got is a chili cook-off winner at the library. And that was Esmeralda Ramirez, and Esmer works there, but she was, if you were voting it all today, she was chili number nine. So if you ate chili number nine, that was the winner. Had our First Citizens Academy last night. Of course, it's, it's interesting because, you know, sometimes when you look behind the curtain, like Mayor Birdson and I have, you kind of know a little bit, but it was fun to learn a lot about other stuff. And that active shooter thing was just amazing what we learned on that. So appreciate Doug and Mark doing that, and the other officers that were there as well too. It's, it's nice when you can be, you know, it's, it's run by the police department and public works, but it's nice that Mark didn't have to stand up for three hours and talk to us. He had the confidence enough to let his other officers take charge, run portions of the class, and be confident in them. And that's, that's really a good show of leadership as well, when you can train and trust, you might say. I got a letter from DNL Sanitation, and this happens to, I've been talking a little bit about some garbage stuff lately, but they've, they've had their updated recycling guidelines. If you're a member of, or if you're a customer of DNL or looking to be one, they say that due to the fire at the Mason City Recycling Center and working with a different facility that's following changes, will need to be made for recycling. Corrugated cardboard only will be picked up on the second Friday of the month. Other paper items, newspapers, magazines, pasteboard, box, dinner cereal boxes, et cetera, will be picked up on the fourth Friday of the month with the clean plastic tin and glass items. It'd be helpful to keep the paper products separate from the plastic tin and glass. The paper products can be put in paper sacks or boxes. Do not use plastic bags. Use the cans or plastic totes that can be emptied and left. And I did give a copy of this to Ron. He's going to put it somewhere, but there's also a little chart diagram on the back of what they do, and there's also some dates of cardboard and dates of the other recycling on there as well, too. So not playing favorites over one garbage hauler there, but this is what came from DNL. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Lamos?
No comment tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davies?
Well, I participated in the library's chili cook-off, and it's safe to say, well, I did vote for number nine. That was very good, and I think, how many were participating?
Nine.
Nine. I think I was like number 10 on the list there, as far as the order of preference. So if anyone wants a taste, I got some samples at home. I'm be, next week, I'll be attending the Spring Main Street Workshop in Jefferson, Iowa on Tuesday and Wednesday. The Chamber's Quarterly Coffee is Friday, March 7th, at the Latimer Community Center, sponsored by Morse Water Company. And the first of three fish fries for St. Patrick's Knights of Columbus is Friday, March 7th. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mayor's report. I've got a couple of items that I want to go over tonight. First one, sad to hear that Mr. Blanford has resigned his seat at the table, so is effective today. So we will be putting this on our workshop, for our next workshop, so that we can, if we want to appoint or how we want to fill that seat. So right now, we just have a, an empty chair right now, so, but. Another item that I just want, kind of wanted to touch on real quick, you know, we've, we've been talked about running, running the meetings efficiently. You know, we, we basically use Robert's Rules of Order, you know, when, when we read them, when we run a meeting. So we, so we just kind of, I want to kind of put some pieces together so that we're all kind of on the same page. Sometimes we kind of stumble over each other once in a while on a gent items when we're trying to talk and, and say things. So I just wanted to focus a little bit about the obtaining the floor when you have comment or of discussion. So I'm just going to, I put some stuff together out of, out of a book. Basically, it just says that before a member, a council member can adjust the council, if it is necessary that they obtain the floor. How do they do that? They, they, you know, they address, they address the chair, say, would address, please address the, the chair as a, as Mayor or Mr. Mayor, or as Chamber Chair if it's not in the council. But I think the question, that some of us, you know, if they have something to say, you know, they'll, they'll give me a little wave or something. You know, sometimes that works. Sometimes I'm talking over here, and I've got a couple of people over here wanting to talk. So, so if you could just, you know, just make an audible sound of some sort so that I recognize everybody, so I want to make sure that we get everybody a turn to speak. If there's two, two or more members that address the Chamber Chair at the same time, the Chair must make a decision on which member to recognize first. You know, usually, it's who I hear, but sometimes it's, you know, maybe the topic we're discussing. Maybe we need to sit her one before the other, you know, stuff like that. So just kind of, kind of a courtesy type thing so that we make sure that we get, everybody gets to talk, you know? I know there's a couple of, a couple of comments were made over the last couple of weeks, and the people didn't think they were being heard. So, so in this way, I think we can, we can clean that up a little bit and hopefully, you know, give everybody an opportunity to speak. It's pretty, pretty plain and simple, you know? And that's all I got today. If anybody's got any questions on that, feel free to, to ask me. Brings us to our final topic, agenda item. I'd have to entertain a motion to adjourn the scheduled, regular scheduled meeting of the Hampton City Council.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Palmer, got a motion, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.